Good evening. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight to this town hall meeting. I just want to get a couple of things. Please shut off your cell phones during the meeting, so they put them on vibrate, shut them off. Also too, you know, tonight I'll be doing a short presentation on the three topics that we're going to talk about: the tax revaluation, the pilot program, and just redevelopment in Middlesex Borough. After I do the short presentations, then I will open it up to, you know, any questions. I would ask you to go up to the microphone right over there, please state your name and your address. I will ask you too, I'm going to limit you to one question at a time, so we can make sure everybody gets an opportunity to ask a question if they do have one. So again, I thank you, I thank you for coming out. One other thing I need to also talk about too is that I cannot specifically talk about the pending project that is before the planning board. I can talk about it generally, but I cannot talk about it specifically, so just so you understand that, we can't talk about that, okay? So, not in specifics at least. So, what I'll be talking about, again, are these three subjects tonight, because there's been a lot of information out there that simply isn't correct, and I just want to make sure that you do get that correct information, so we know what the borough's dealing with and what you're dealing with the taxpayers. So the first topic I'm going to talk about tonight is the tax revaluation. I'm sure we all, you all read in the paper in December that Middlesex County and the state ordered us to have our tax revaluation done for the tax year 2019. Even though, in the middle of last year, the governing body decided to be proactive with that issue, and submitted a plan to have it completed in 2001, 2021 I should say, and they accepted it, the county accepted I should say. Unfortunately, the state stepped in and said, "No, we're not accepting that," and ordered the county to order us to have it done by the tax year 2019. Well, I just felt that that was totally unacceptable, so I sat down with the leaders of the county, especially Freehold Director Ron Rios and County Administrator John Palamina, and I'm happy to say that last week I received a letter from the state and the county tax boards, saying that they're accepting our original plan to complete the tax revaluation by the year 2020, and it will affect the tax year of 2021. What that does is that it enables us to set aside money to pay for the cost of the tax revaluation over the next four years. And the reason why, it's going to cost us approximately $600,000 to just do that revaluation. That's not what your taxes may change or anything like, that's what it's going to cost us just to do it. So in the process, I talked with the county, I told them how much of a burden I was putting on our taxpayers, and I'm also happy to say that we will be going into an interlocal agreement with Middlesex County for technical and financial support when it comes to do this process, and it will save the borough approximately 50% of that cost. So you know what, maybe the state did us a favor in changing it to 2019, it enabled me to sit with the county leaders and to be able to get some of that cost paid for. So as you know, the tax revaluation will be completed in 2020, but it will affect your tax year of 2021. The revaluation has been long overdue. The last time we did one was in 1986. What the revaluation will do, will finally enable the borough to spread the cost of taxes fairly evenly amongst all property owners. But that being said, approximately 60% of the property owners in the borough will see some type of increase in their taxes in 2021. A big reason for that is that also, we will be losing approximately 40% of the tax revenues that we got from our commercial and industrial properties. The reason for that is those businesses that were in those buildings simply aren't there anymore, and they're vacant, and they're left to deteriorate over the years. So, as you can see, the need for redevelopment is very, very important, especially after the tax revaluation. You know, because who picks up the difference? It's you, the taxpayer, the residents. So we need to continue to have a redevelopment plan that does look for new development and growth, so we can offset those losses and bring those ratables back into the borough. One of the other questions I got with the revaluation was, how would it affect our seniors who currently take advantage of the state's senior freeze program? And basically, as long as the seniors have not made a substantial improvement to their property, they will still be able to continue to take advantage of that program under the current levels they are now. But if they have made a substantial improvement, unfortunately, what will happen is their taxes will be brought up to the current level, and they can start that senior freeze all over again, but at a higher level. In talking with our tax assessor, unfortunately, he could not be here tonight because he's on vacation, but in talking with him, he was pretty confident that the majority of our seniors that are taking advantage of that senior freeze program will continue to be able to do so even after the revaluation is in effect, and they will not be affected in a negative way. But again, if you have made a substantial, you know, improvement to your property, it will affect, you'll have to go up to current rates, and then at that point, you can get into the program again. But like I, you know, as he told me, he believed that most of our seniors involved in that program will continue to benefit from it on the levels they are now. So, there are a couple of things that I wanted to talk about as far as the tax revaluation. The next topic I want to talk about again would be our payment in lieu of taxes, or the pilot program. Now, the key word in that, when I say payment in lieu of taxes, is payment, because what I've seen on Facebook, and what I've heard when people have come to see me in my office, I've heard that the apartment complex that's located at 150 Lincoln Boulevard, that's almost completed, I was told that they don't pay taxes for 20 years. I was told they don't pay taxes for 30 years. I'm here to tell you that that simply is not correct. Under the pilot program that they are in now, they will start to pay a revenue to the borough, starting immediately as soon as that project is completed, and it should be completed probably in the next month or so, okay? So, again, they're not, they don't have any type of an abatement that allows them not to pay taxes for five years, 10 years, 20 years, or 30 years, okay? They will be paying a revenue to the borough in lieu of taxes, but they're paying a revenue to the borough, and they will continue to pay a revenue for a 30-year period as per that agreement. Now, what is that agreement, okay? The agreement is basically, you take their gross revenue that they receive in rents, you subtract the cost of utilities, and the borough gets 12.5% of that revenue each year. Also, they also continue, the borough continues to get the assessed value of the land it's on, also. So right now, you know, we're currently receiving, I think roughly about $24,000 in revenue right now in total taxes. The borough will continue to receive that, and what they get in the pilot program will be on top of that, okay? So, again, I want to emphasize before we move on, start to talk more about the pilot program, is that they are paying a revenue to the borough from the first day that that project is done. They're not going to have, you know, any type of, they're not paying taxes or paying a revenue to the borough at all. They will always be paying a revenue to the borough. I wanted to clear it up, because that's been an issue that I've heard from a lot of people, and it simply wasn't true, and I wanted to clear that up. You know, the question also I've often received is, why does the borough offer a pilot program? Well, I don't know if you've been reading the paper, especially the Courier-News, you look at all the towns around us, whether it's Greenbrook, Raritan Borough, Somerville, Dan Ellen, Bridgewater, Piscataway, Highland Park, they're all pushing for new development. And so it's a very competitive market out there. And what the state did is they came up with a program that enables community, all the communities, not just Middlesex Borough, but all the communities, a way to encourage investors to do new development in their borough, especially within areas that have been left to be run down, or just, you know, with a bunch of vacant properties, and it's an area where, you know, as we say, you need a redevelopment. It enables the borough to use this as a tool to attract investors to come to the borough. The benefit for the borough is that it gives stability, okay, for us. It starts, it enables us to start to give stability as far as those areas, and bring in the ratables, and bring in the growth that we need to continue to offset what we're losing in our industrial areas. The era of, you know, the era of the light industrial properties are over. The era of, you know, of strip malls are over. They just don't work. Go drive along Route 22, drive along Route 28. You see a lot of vacant stores, okay? So, again, it's a tool that was given to the municipalities by the state to encourage developers to come to our towns to invest in our community. That's what the pilot program is about. I know there's been talk also about the breakdown and how much money that we get. I'm going to ask them to put up that chart, and as you can see, currently, if you see up there, that right now, the total revenue the borough receives is roughly $24,000. The borough tax revenue that we keep between the borough and the Board of Ed is $21,000, and the rest of the money goes to Middlesex County, $3,400. Now, when the project is done, if we totally assess that property, it will be approximately around $500,000 a year. Under that total assessment, the borough tax revenue, which is the borough and the Board of Ed combined, would be approximately $430,000 a year, and the county would get approximately $69,000. And the additional revenue that we would receive each year over and above what we got before would be $409,000 a year, and we would be getting that, you know, as long as that property, obviously, is the way it is. Now, the pilot program, I have two choices there, or two options there. One is, the pilot program before the revale is completed. The total tax revenue the borough will receive is $424,000. Of that, the borough will keep $421,000, or $422,000 there, with $23,000 going to the county. That's an increase of more than $400,000, or $400,000 a year, okay? That includes the pilot program and also that $24,000 that we are currently getting. Now, after the pilot program, after the revale is done, that number's going to go up, and the reason why that number's going to go up is because the value of that land is going to increase by approximately 150%, as per my tax assessor. So now, after that revale is done, the borough will generate $481,000 a year. The borough tax revenue from that, for both the borough and the Board of Ed, would be $432,000 a year, and the county would get roughly 50. That's an increase of $411,000 a year. That's more than $12 million over a 30-year period. I know a lot of people out there have said that the pilot program isn't good, because it just benefits the developer. As you can see, the developer gets a little break as far as what he would be paying the borough, but the borough gets to keep more than if it was fully assessed. It's about the same, but a couple bucks more. So the borough isn't losing revenue that it would normally get if they totally, you know, fully assessed that value. I want to say that again, they're not losing any revenue if, you know, compared to the fully assessed and what the pilot would be after the revale. That's been something that's been said out there too, that simply isn't correct.
Can you be there?
There's no questions yet. Yeah, we have to ask questions when I'm done, okay? So, again, that's important for us to realize that. You know, we talk about what it can do, and I know there's been a lot of questions again about, well, you know what, it's not fair, because under the pilot program, 95% of the money generated goes to the borough, goes into the borough coffers, okay? 5% goes to the county, and no money is sent directly to the schools. Well, when you pay your taxes, let me ask you this, who pays, who's responsible for the borough taxes? Is it you, taxpayer? You're the ones that pay those taxes, and when you get your tax bill, it's one bill that's combined with both borough and Board of Ed, and county, right? The taxes are all paid out of the same pocket, okay? They all come out of the same pot, and when there's an increase in revenue, whether it's all generated to the borough or split up, it doesn't really matter, that additional revenue will help you, the taxpayer, when it comes to your tax bill. You know, a lot of times I've heard, "It's not fair, it's not fair that the schools don't get anything." Then my question to them would be, is it fair that the schools get the revenue from all the commercial and industrial properties that don't bring kids to our school district? They get that portion, they get money from those properties. Is that fair? The answer is yes, it is, and the reason why is because it all goes into the same pot, okay? The money comes out of your pocket. Doesn't matter which one it comes out of, it still comes out of your pocket. So when we're giving, getting additional revenue off a project, whether it's through the pilot program, or whether it's through fully, you know, tax assessment, that additional money is benefiting you, whether it all goes to the borough, or where it's split up between the borough and the Board of Ed. So I just wanted, you know, make that, you know, make that clear to you, and also let you know that the average tax in the borough, on the average property in the borough, is roughly $7,800 a year. And over the last 15 years, as per an article in the Star Ledger last year, our average increase over that 15-year was approximately 2.03%, which is roughly about $158 a year. That's on the average house. If you have a house that's worth more than that average house, obviously, your increase would be more. But just the additional revenue that we would generate from the project that's located on 150 Lincoln Boulevard, just from that revenue, that we would be, we would be able to reduce that annual increase by almost 50%. It would reduce it by 48%. So just one project like this, bringing in that revenue, is enabling the borough to reduce the total tax increase by 48%. Again, whatever revenue comes to the borough, whether it goes all to the borough, or goes to the borough and the Board of Ed, benefits you, the taxpayer, whatever way it is, okay? And also, you need to understand too, the Board does not lose any revenue that it gets now, under that $24,000 that they get now, okay, that we get now. So they still continue to get that, so they're not losing any revenue either, okay? I know there's been a lot of questions as far as that, when it comes to the pilot program. The last thing I want to talk about in general would be redevelopment. And, you know, as I said, when we talked about the revaluation, when you see that we're losing roughly 40% of our commercial and our industrial ratables, more and more when that revale is done, the need for new development and growth is even stronger after that's done, okay? We can no longer, you know, depend on the traditional commercial and industrial ratables anymore. Year after year, they become less and less. New development will help us replace those ratables that we've lost over the years, and lessen the tax burden to our taxpayers. New development will also enable us to continue to reinvest in our infrastructure and our borough's quality of life, while keeping our taxes still under control. That's what redevelopment will do for us. Over the past decade, there was an article, you know, in the Courier-News recently, and it stated, "Over the past decade, there's been a fundamental shift in the lifestyle and the housing preference throughout the state of New Jersey and the nation." You know, it's been shift from single-family homes to high-end multifamily housing. This trend is driven by the so-called bookend generations, the millennials and the baby boomers. The millennials don't want the responsibility of owning a home, they would prefer to have the luxury apartment living with all the amenities, they don't want the responsibility of owning a home at this time in their lives. So the majority of them are not looking to buy a home, they're looking to live in high-end apartments. The baby boomers are doing the same thing for a different reason. Well, for the same reason, but for a different cause. They don't want the responsibility anymore of that house, they don't need that four-bedroom single-family house anymore. So what they're looking for is, again, an upscale lifestyle, but in a smaller size, and they no longer want that responsibility either. So as you can see, that trend is becoming more and more dominant, and it's a trend that's going to stay with us. It's not going to go away in a couple of years, okay? And if you see, if you look at Somerville, you look at Bridgewater, you look in Highland Park, Raritan Borough, you see what they're building. They're building a combination of the high-end apartment units, along with mixed-use and commercial on the bottom. That's what these two groups are looking for, they're looking for that change in lifestyle. So the borough, you know, has a need to attract these new types of development, and replace the ratables that we're losing. So, you know, again, what amazes me, again, in that article that I was reading, more than 60% of the households in New Jersey at this time are made up of one person living alone, or two people living together. And also, 65% of the households in New Jersey don't have children under the age of 18. And that's an article that was written in the Courier-News, I believe it was last Monday, if I'm not mistaken. When I saw those numbers, that kind of took me back from, you know, I didn't know that there was that many households that don't have kids under 18, but according to that article, that's what it is. So, you know, so as you see, the current and future trends show that the type of new development does not have, you know, again, the questions that have been asked throughout this, how many kids are going to come from these projects? You know what, the answer is, we don't know what it's going to be every year, we just don't know. We can only base it on the experience that we have already. I know at the Planning Board meeting, I think it was stated, that I think 100-plus apartments are rented under the 150, and I think there's four kids there, okay? Does that mean that's what it's going to be? No, it doesn't. That could change every year, okay? It could be 10 kids one year, it could be 20 kids, it might be 40. I don't think it'll get that high, but it could be. What I do believe though, is that, no matter what that number is, unless you get into a number of 75, 100, it's not going to have a negative effect on our school district. And why do I say that? Because you know what, if you look over the years, you know, 20 years ago, when we had the last big project development in this town, which was the Osterman property, we built 70 single-family homes with three bedrooms in them. And again, I remember sitting at those meetings, and I remember everybody saying, "What's that going to do to our school district?" Well, everyone, they didn't do anything to our school district, okay? They were able to continue, they were able to, you know, give the kids the education that they wanted, our taxes didn't go all of a sudden through the roof, you know, they stabilized that, because there's a lot of things that affect how many kids go into school. There's drop-off each year from the graduating class, the new class coming in, you know, again, if you, the new apartments that is being proposed, there's 40 units there of two-bedroom. So let's say there is 40 kids, let's say 40 kids come from that, that's less than four kids per grade, okay? Now, there may be more in some grades than others, but you know what, the school district is not going to hire another additional teacher or staffer, their insurance costs are not going to go up, their utilities aren't going to change, you know, their pension costs aren't going to change, other than, you know, the annual increases, all their fixed costs are not going to change. The only thing that's going to change is roughly about 10 or 15% of that cost per kid. And if you look at their numbers, and looking at their budget and break it down, you're talking about $3,000 to $3,500 a kid, okay, with those numbers. So it's not going to have a major change in the budget of the school district, because there's going to be kids in those apartments, okay? I don't believe there will be a lot of kids, but I'm not going to tell you there definitely isn't. I can see what's happened in other towns. You know, if you go to Somerville, who's had, over the last five or six years, an unbelievable redevelopment program that's been very successful, and you're talking with them, it has not had a negative effect in our school district. And they have a lot more apartments than we're talking about here. So, again, I know we have a concern, and I know that we're worried about what that will, you know, what the kids will bring to our district, you know, our school district, but I think it's a concern right now that that, I don't think we really need to worry about, as far as a budget standpoint. You know, even, you know, and at meetings at the Board of Ed, they've been asked about the apartments, they've been asked if it would have an effect, they've been asked several times, and every time, at least at the meetings I've been at, they're, they don't have a concern, they don't think it will affect them, okay? So, again, but does that mean it won't? We don't know. I don't know what the future is, nor do you. And if it does change, I'm sure the borough and the Board of Ed will make sure that if there's funding needed to go towards that school budget, it will be done, okay? So, again, that's not a reason to offer a pilot program to a developer if it's going to make, be better for Middlesex Borough. Now, all pilot options may not be good for the borough. That doesn't mean every development we do, that we're going to offer a pilot program. You know, if it doesn't make sense for the borough, then we're not going to do it, okay? And the developer needs to understand that. But in the case of the 1 on 150, the governing body at that time, my personal opinion, I think they made the right decision. I think it brought in a project that the borough needed to get in. I don't agree with the way it's situated, I don't agree with the issues we're dealing with on parking, and we need to make sure we don't make that mistake again as a borough, and that's the reason why I wasn't in favor of it back then, but we need to learn from that. That doesn't mean it isn't good for the borough, okay? The additional revenue is important. If we don't start to attract this new development and track this growth, then the future of our community is in jeopardy. It's going to continue to deteriorate. We can't wait and hope that light industry will come back. We can't wait that someday, maybe strip malls will work again. We can't do that. What we can do is make sure we do redevelopment that makes sense and is right for our borough. We need to make sure that our plans consider what the needs are of changing markets and a changing economy, but we need to balance that and make sure that we're not, that we're protecting our quality of life and the image, and who we are as a borough. And that's what we need to do, and the way we can do that is by all of us having an open mind on new opportunities and working together. And I think if we do that, then we can have a successful redevelopment plan. So, that's all I have to say tonight as far as my little spiel at this moment. I will now open it up to the floor and take on any questions, please state your next, please step up to the microphone, please state your name, your address, and I will answer your question. If I can't, don't have the answer, I will get it to you. How you doing, Mark?
How are you?
Good.
So my question is the...
Just give your name.
I'm sorry, I'm Mark Porcelli, I own Honest One Auto Care on Mount Brook Road.
Sure.
So I'm vested in this community, I've invested in property in this community, I pay a lot of taxes in this community, I'm perfectly good with all that. My question to you was, the property in question that we're talking about with the pilot program, and I'm familiar with what a pilot program is, is what was that property used prior to the development? What type of revenue was the town getting prior to that development, and was there any contamination there? And you can answer it, I don't have...
Sure. The property on, located on 150 Lincoln Boulevard, if people have lived in the borough for a while, know, remember the old Chemray building that blew up in the 80s, okay? That property has been, was vacant for more than, oh God, yeah, more than 30 years after that happened. I think, believe it happened in 1983?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five, was it? Okay, it's 1985, okay? And it's been vacant since then. And yes, Mark, it was very contaminated, and a developer there spent his own money, he got some grant money, but he spent his own money to clean up that property, to build the apartments that are on there now, okay? So, and to ask me what the tax revenue was, it was a little less than that $24,000, it was about $21,000 at that time, okay? But yes, he spent his own money to clean up that contamination, and to make that property a viable piece of property now. So yes, he did. And that's the reason why giving him a pilot program made sense, because he did, you know, here's a developer, yeah, he's making money, don't get me wrong, okay? But yet, he's taking a chance, he's investing his money to clean up a property that's been vacant for 35 years, or born in 35 years, and, or more than 30 years, I should say, and he's cleaning that up, making a viable piece of property, and putting a property on there that's going to bring additional revenue to the borough. That's why I wasn't on the governing body when that happened, but I do agree with their decision, which I believe both groups, Democrat and Republicans, voted for at that time. Debbie?
Oh, yes, say my name, she knows me. I have a laundry list... I have a laundry list here, so if anybody has any questions, just knock me out of the way. I have a question for Mr. Ricky, if he could...
No, you'll direct it to me.
Okay.
Then if I have it.
Okay. On his website, he has some information regarding...
Can I ask whose website?
Ricky Planning.
Oh, Paul Ricky's, okay.
He has some information on area in need of redevelopment, and area in need of rehabilitation. We are, according to our plan, we are an area in need of rehabilitation.
No, we changed that in 2013?
Little after.
Little after, was it?
2015.
Was it 15? Okay, in 2015, we changed that to an area in need of redevelopment.
Are you sure, Mayor?
Yes.
Exactly.
Yep.
It seems like we're processing, then, the way a rehabilitation works.
See, what happened way back when, when they did the original plan, which you're correct, it was a plan in need of revitalization. And the biggest reason why the borough did that at that time was because if you had redevelopment, if you had a need of redevelopment, you could use eminent domain. Revitalization didn't allow you to use eminent domain, if that's correct, Mr. Ricky? Okay. And then, I think, when did they change that for redevelopment, giving you the option?
That was around the same period of time that the borough undertook that investment.
Around 2015?
Yes.
Okay. The state then changed and said that any area in need of redevelopment didn't have to use eminent domain if they didn't want to. And the biggest reason that the borough went to revitalization is because they did not, they wanted to make sure that no matter what, future councils and governing bodies and mayors would not ever use eminent domain to do revitalization or redevelopment.
Is that on our website? Because...
As far as the change?
Yeah.
Yes, the new plan should be, but if not, we will, I will make sure you get a copy. Okay? As far as that. Kathy, can you make sure she gets a copy of that? Okay.
Okay. You mentioned about the pilot programs and the schools using funding, and it doesn't matter, we're all paying, and, you know. I think, you know, if people studied from other towns, you know, we made our development, redevelopment plan, like, over 10 years ago. Other towns and cities made theirs 10 years ago, but implemented theirs right away. So now, if you read and follow their history and their troubles or their triumphs, one of the problems they have is particularly in Bayonne, the schools are underfunded, and also, it's affected their state aid, because the pilot program money is not covered under the ratables. So therefore, when the state calculates state aid, the schools are getting a reduced state aid. So one of the things they're doing to correct that problem is that the town is taking 90%, they're giving 5% to the school, and 5% to the county. Could we do that?
First off, what you're talking about with Bayonne, I believe Bayonne is an abbott school district, I believe, and...
The mayor too.
Yes.
The entire borough of Bayonne is an area in need of redevelopment.
The entire areas? Okay. But it is also an abbott school district, isn't it?
I'm not certain about that.
I know.
Not Bayonne, Jersey City.
Jersey City is, I know Newark is. I thought Bayonne is not an abbott school district?
No.
Because I know, I don't know if you're taking that from the report that the Controller's office did, I got five or six years ago. But they talked about that, and they talked about what the effect would be. Really, the issue, to answer your question, will we work with the Board of Ed and give them dollars? Sure, we will work with them. Okay?
But the problem is, Mayor, you know, if you think about it, you may not always be mayor. I have no doubt, if you were mayor, you would help the school. But you don't know, from one election to the next, you don't know personalities.
Sure.
The next mayor might not think that way. So I think, you know, the schools need to have money.
Well, again, that would be actually something that I can definitely bring back to the governing body when the next program comes about, and to talk to them about that. If that's something they would like to do, and it makes sense to them, then I would be all for that. And, you know, also, too, you talked about the history, let's talk about Woodbridge. Now, Woodbridge, right now, they've been taking advantage of pilot programs probably for the last 10 years, if not longer. And in talking with Mayor McCormick the other week, he told me, right now, Woodbridge has $44 million a year in pilot revenue. And what he does, he does exactly that. He allocates a piece of those dollars to do joint projects that the Board of Ed can't do, you know, like sidewalks, and, you know, capital improvements, because it's really hard for him to go out and do bonding. That's what he does with them. Okay? So there's a lot of different ways that the borough can work with the school district. But again, I'll bring that option to the attention of the governing body.
And, you know, speaking of Woodbridge, Mayor McCormick, he's a shaker and a mover.
Yes, he is.
We know that.
Yes, he is.
And that town takes care of business.
Yes, he does.
I've learned from my husband being on the council, I was on the council, he was on the zoning board, we're more of a reactive town, not a proactive town. Over the years, I've seen tons of things let go. We just overlook them, and a lot of it's monetary, and you know that yourself. For a while there, we struggled with different things that were let go for years. So, the pilot programs, it really concerns me, who's going to monitor this? You know, we...
When they say monitor, what do you mean?
Like, well, if you read the pilot agreement, which I got an Oprah request, and I have read the agreement, you know, there's a lot of monitoring, there's a lot of billing. We have a new tax collector that's not certified. Now, I know she's a whiz with numbers, and there's no doubt eventually she'll be very proficient, but, you know, who's going to monitor all this?
Our CFO and our auditor will be monitoring that, along with our business administrator that we haven't had before.
No.
And our other professionals will make sure it gets monitored. You know, Debbie, I do agree with you, this borough has been a reactive borough for a long, long time.
It scares me.
Okay? And we need to change that. We need to start to be proactive. And over the last year and couple of months that I've been mayor, we're trying to change that. And the reason why we're able to start to change that is because all of us, whether Democrats, whether Republicans on that governing body, we're all working together to do that. Okay? So, yeah, I agree with you. I mean, we need to be more proactive. We can't continue to be reactive, because every time you're reactive, you're behind. You're not ahead.
Right.
Okay? And that's why we need to be aggressive when it comes to redevelopment. And I agree with you, again, if there's a concern, and the governing body has a concern and wants to make sure that a portion of that money does go to the school every year, I have no problem with that. Okay? And we can do that. But we can't not do things because, oh, it's just not fair.
Yeah, I'm not saying not do it, I just have concerns, you know, I know we have to do it, but I just have concerns, and, you know, it's, I know how we've operated in the past. I mean, sometimes I really ask Kenny, how many times, I just want to buy a little tin box with some index cards and the year thing to make a tickler system, and bring it and give it as a gift to the borough. So every time a contract is signed, you put a little tickler in, when it expires, because so many things fall through the cracks.
But, you know, also, too, that, not to cut you off for a minute, but, you know, for all the years, we didn't have an administrator.
Right.
And now, that's going to change, because we do have one now. Okay? You know, we run a $16 million business, and for how many years, we did it without an administrator? We did it with somebody running the operation on a part-time basis.
Right.
And I will tell you, I did it for about nine months, and it's a lot of work, and you can't do the job you're supposed to do on a part-time basis.
Right.
So now that we do have an administrator, I think that you'll start to see the change. And yes, we have to make sure that we're on top of these contracts when they expire.
So I'll bring him the tickler box as a gift.
Bring it to him, that's what he can do. Okay?
So anyway, I'm talking specific...
Let me just, does anybody else have any other questions? Anybody have questions? Come on up, okay? Debbie, can you let her, if you can come back?
Absolutely. Yeah, I said if anybody has anything else. I didn't want to...
Chase you would, no, because I wanted to know something.
Your name, ma'am?
Sharon Garner.
Sharon, how are you?
Okay.
Good.
Now, I have my fourth house that I own in Middlesex.
Okay.
I downsized. And I don't know anything about the senior freeze program.
Okay.
Can you give me a little bit of information about that?
Sure.
Because I'm certainly...
Basically, it's based on income, and it's a form that you have to fill out. As a matter of fact, now's the time to come down to the tax office and pick up the form, okay, and fill it out. It's based on your income, and what it enables you to do is freeze your taxes at the current level, and every year, you have to fill out that form and reapply for it. Okay? So if you have not done that, then I will tell you to come down to the tax office, and Darcy, who's at the window, will help you with that.
Do you have any idea of approximate income to be able to...
Sheila, I'll ask you.
It's frozen at $87,000. The collection will depend upon whether the legislature or the budget.
Right.
So currently, branded by real, I think it's $72,000, Brandon, you're paying.
Approximately, yes.
So, but your taxes would be frozen if they're $87,007 or a hundred.
Right. So if your income is $87,007 or under, then you would qualify for that.
Oh, okay.
Okay? So, you know, again, get the form, it's a very, it's not that complicated of a form, but I'm sure if you do have some questions, you can go see Sheila at the Senior Center, and she will help you with it. Okay? Okay?
So, today.
But I would definitely tell you to look into that, if you haven't done that.
Okay. Now, with the revenue that they're paid, that are, is being paid by the new apartments on Lincoln Boulevard being built, be as high to the community as it would be, like, as a homeowner owned that two-bedroom unit, would they be paying as high, you said they're paying money towards...
Right. And if you, can you put that back up, Brandon? If you look at the chart up there, if you see where it says total assessment?
Yes.
Or do you have it there?
I have, I have.
Where it says total assessment, it says $500,000. That's what the approximate revenue would be if it was assessed just like your house is. Okay? That's what they, that's what they would be paying. All right? Out of that $500,000, 400, roughly $430,000 go to the borough, between the borough and the Board of Ed. The remaining money, the $69,000, goes to the county. Okay? So as you can see, the increase in revenue is approximately $409,000. Under the pilot program, the total revenue we'll generate is $481,000 a year. Of that, $432,000 will stay with the borough, and only $49,000 will go to the county. So as you can see, the revenue that the borough keeps, or the increase in revenue, is $411,000. So if you compare the two, the pilot program is actually giving a couple more dollars to the borough than it would normally get if it was assessed the way your house is.
Okay. Now, another question is, there's going to be redevelopment a lot on Lincoln Boulevard. You happen to have a picture that really looks nice, and I know you can't say a lot about it, but can you tell me, because I'm guessing that it's going to be on the corner of Cedar Avenue and Lincoln Boulevard?
No. There's no proposed development on the corner of Cedar.
Can you tell me where, can you say where it's?
It's right next to the Pathmark property?
Yes.
Is the proposed one, that's in front of the Planning Board now.
Okay.
That's where it is.
Okay. And it will be apartments and businesses underneath?
It'll be a mixed use, yes.
Okay. And will that increase our taxes?
It won't increase your taxes, no.
Okay. Because they will be paying their share.
They'll be paying the revenue from the time, if it's approved, and it hasn't been approved yet, and I think we're a long way to that yet, okay? But if it gets approved, they will, once it's completed, just like the existing project of 150, they'll start paying revenue immediately. Whether it's a pilot program, or whether it's just a few regular taxation, they will start paying the revenue to the borough immediately, once it's completed.
Okay. Now, if I get involved in that senior tax, which I would qualify.
Yeah.
Single person living alone, and what percentage do you feel that a person like that's, taxes will go up after this pilot program?
Your taxes won't go up because of the pilot program at all. Your taxes will never go up.
By 2021, they're going to go up.
Oh, I mean, as far as, for the tax revaluation, not the pilot program.
How is it going to affect...
You know, it's hard to tell. I don't want to give you a number, I don't want to sit there, because every property's going to be different.
Right.
Because they're going to come in and do an actual appraisal of your property. They're going to come in your house, they're going to go through the rooms, they're going to do all of that, and they're going to come up with an assessed value at that time. Okay? What it is, and it also depends on how much the values go up and how much that tax rate goes down, so it's really kind of hard for us to tell you what that number will be. But we do know approximately 60% of the homeowners will see some type of increase.
But if you're in that senior program, you'll still be under...
As long as you have not made any major or substantial improvements to your house. Like an addition, stuff like that.
What if I, well, okay, what if I made some now? I just bought it in August. I did make some now.
What did you do?
Exterior, I widened the driveway.
No, that's not going to affect...
And put a water heater in.
That's not going to affect that, no.
Okay.
No, it's not going to affect that.
I spent a lot of money.
Okay.
So I can get under the freeze now.
That's not going to affect that.
Okay, great.
Okay?
Thank you.
But I would tell you, definitely come in tomorrow and get that form. Okay? Thank you. Is there anyone else that has a question? Come on up, Barbara. How are you today?
Wonderful, how are you?
Good, good.
Barbara Berkowski. Two things, three things, actually. On the website, you can't open the redevelopment plan, like, the third one down. You can open up the first one, which is the original.
We will make sure Brandon gets on that tomorrow and gets that fixed.
And the third one.
Okay, we will make sure that gets fixed tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay?
Can you talk a little bit more about the redevelopment that's planned for Lincoln Boulevard in regard to which properties, or the scope of the properties, or how far down, or which ones would be picked for redevelopment? And then, as a part of that, how will we, how will the borough look for redevelopers?
Okay.
So that we have, perhaps, a number of different people interested in the property, so that there would be a variety of things to look at.
Right. You know, I'm going to answer your second question first.
Okay.
Okay? You know, ask me how, you know, the borough's going to go about looking to attract developers. Okay? You know, at a previous council meeting, I, the council agreed, and we're moving forward to form a redevelopment committee. Okay? And after speaking to you, and also hearing from some of the residents at our meeting, we're expanding the number of people that are going to be on it. Okay?
That's nice.
And that redevelopment committee, along with the hiring of a redevelopment director, he will be, or he or she will be the person who will be the ringleader to go out and prospect for developers from Middlesex Borough that fits what our plan, you know, our vision for our plan, okay? So that redevelopment committee will be the group that starts to go out and look for developers for the borough, as per the redevelopment plan.
Where do they go out? Who? I mean, how, what do they do?
That's where the director comes in, that's where the director comes in, and that director will guide the redevelopment committee, he will make the recommendations, he will make the contacts, that's what he does, that's what they do, okay? And what's great about that is that as the redevelopment plan starts to take off, the cost for that director will be paid by the developers themselves, not by the borough.
Yeah, you see that.
We'll have to do it in the beginning a little bit to get it off the ground, but as the redevelopment projects start to come in, and redevelopment plan starts to work, the developers will pay for his cost, as far as that, okay? So, again, now, getting back to your first question?
Right.
I'm going to defer to you, Paul, to kind of give what the, you know, what the, you know, the outlook of the redevelopment plan is, the vision, and also with the changes we made last year. Just a brief, keep it brief, okay?
Sure, I'll try to be brief, but the way that the borough always saw its redevelopment was in really three core areas. The entire corridor consists of approximately one hundred and ninety-seven properties, but not to get overly technical, but out of those one hundred and ninety-seven properties, the majority of them can utilize the existing zoning or choose to opt in to the plan. However, the area next to the Pathmark, for example, the area where one fifty Lincoln Boulevard is, and the area pretty much about the intersection where, you know, just the intersection of Lincoln Boulevard and Mountain, in that general area, those are all areas that the zoning is, it supersedes the underlying zoning, and individuals are required to essentially conform to the plan.
Can, can you just explain, what does that mean? There are currently businesses there, they have, what do they have to do?
Okay, because historically, I think everyone recognizes that the corridor had a mix of traditional, single-use, commercial, and industrial development.
Mm-hmm.
And in those non-focus areas, that can continue, or the individual can essentially conform to the plan, it's the property owner's option. In those three areas that I discussed, the focus areas, you're required to conform to the new mixed-use requirements, per se.
What does that mean? So I'm a man who, a person who owns a, an auto body shop, I'm just picking this out of the air.
Yes.
And I have to conform to the plan, but what do I have to do?
Well, if you, if you continue to operate your property as is, you're protected by law, that you can continue to operate your property by right.
Okay.
If you look to expand your property, just say you have an auto repair business, you want to put another bay on, that would not be permitted. You're allowed to keep what you have, because the intention of the zoning is to encourage you to participate in the plan, and that can occur if you essentially, from a zoning perspective, allow that individual to keep expanding their property. There's other ways that that can occur, but the goal is to encourage people to conform to the plan.
Paul, didn't we make a change where that they could either comply with the plan or revert back to the original use?
Yes, but that is, that was meant for areas that were in the focus group, where it superseded, or you're required to conform to the plan. But the way the original plan was, was written, I don't want to be overly technical, but it required lots to be consolidated, to have enough land for the redevelopment project to occur. And hypothetically speaking, under the old plan, it was, it was very rigid, and your building had to be a certain shape and size, and just say, you own one piece of property, your piece of property could be the accessway for a larger building, and your, the property next to you could have been a portion of the building, and unless that, all that land was consolidated together, that redevelopment could not occur. And, and what the mayor's saying is, the plan was written to be more flexible, to allow property owners to essentially utilize the, the existing zoning if that occurred, but we made it even easier after that.
Barry, you want to add something to that?
Yes.
I'd just like to say that this plan actually gives a property owner more options.
Okay.
There's zoning, which tells you what you can do.
Right.
But then there's this overlay of the redevelopment, which gives a property owner, depending on the size, depending on where it's located on Lincoln Boulevard, gives you more options on improving the property. So it's a, it's, it gives everyone a lot of options.
It provides more value to those properties as well.
Are we really looking at, then?
Thank you.
The properties that are vacant, or...
It, we're not looking at any particular, the borough's not looking at any particular property. It's really as, whether it's developers, property owners, whomever comes to the borough. I mean, we're not out there saying, see that piece of property, we want that developed, okay? It's really based on the market, and who really, at this moment, right now, who comes in and says, hey, I have an idea, this is what I want to do.
So unless there's a person who owns a property there who wants to be a part of the redevelopment, or to improve his property, you don't have to do anything.
Sure.
A person just, no more of Lincoln Boulevard would be redeveloped if none of the people want to redevelop.
Well, at this point, there's been...
Is that true? I'm just trying to understand.
There's been interest from developers, per se, and I have to say, in other communities, once you kind of get started, historically, there becomes more interest in redevelopment. The first person in typically is taking the greatest risk, but with that said, the mayor talked about the potential creation of a redevelopment committee and executive director, but what, what could be done by way, the example is, is the borough can select specific tracks that they want to target and identify, create a request for proposals, and advertise.
That's master, that's master.
And advertise, this is where we would like to encourage redevelopment, and that's one way that, that could take place.
Because as redevelopment does happen...
So have you selected those properties, then?
Yeah, I mean, but we can't, if the property owner doesn't want to do anything, then it stays the way it is. It's, it's still, ultimately, still up to that property owner.
Okay.
Okay?
But you have some...
Whether they sell it, or whatever. So, you know, the, the plan does not force property owners to do anything with their properties.
Right.
Okay, so...
Have you approached those businesses, or those property owners?
That's what the redevelopment committee will start to do with the director, yes.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Okay, Deb, go ahead.
Just want to make sure. Okay. Right, I got the Oprah request for the one fifty Lincoln Boulevard pilot program. So, you know, this is a concern. Well, first of all, I went on the state website, this developer has eighteen businesses in the state. On the pilot agreement, well, first, when he started out in front of the council in the planning and zoning, he was one fifty Lincoln Boulevard LLC. On his agreement, there's three companies there. One fifty Lincoln Boulevard Urban Renewal LLC, one fifty Lincoln Development Company Limited Partnership, and one fifty Lincoln Development Group LLC. My, my concern is, what is in these application packages? Do you ask, like, this guy signed as managing member, do you ask for the LLC's formation to provide him...
Again, I wasn't...
To provide proof that he is an authorized person to sign these.
I will defer that to Arvin, our attorney, to answer that for you.
We know who owns the property. The idea is that you want to bind as many of the entities as possible to the underlying debt, or the obligations in the developer's agreement. So having more entities that are bound by a developer's agreement is better than having fewer. And you're, to answer your question as to whether there's any due diligence on the part of the borough to determining whether these entities are even related to the property, absolutely.
Well, because I noticed on other towns, I was reading their agreements, and a lot of them have a certification stating that the person signing is an authorized person of those companies. And it wouldn't be a bad idea to make them provide in the application process, I mean, an LLC can have two people, one person, it could have two hundred people, you know, who are we giving these agreements to? And I think that's another lesson we've learned in the past, where, you know, something happens to a property, and all of a sudden, the owners disappear, and we're stuck, you know, putting up fences and this and that. So do we require that when they put their application in?
I'm not sure the application you're talking about, you're, are you talking about executing a developer's agreement?
Right.
Well...
An application to develop land.
Actually, she's talking about the agreement for the pilot program.
Well, in, in the, I'll just, in the meeting minutes, I believe it was December, when he did his presentation to the mayor and council, it mentioned the application, you know, he submitted an application.
That was the application for the development. That was not a developer's agreement or anything like that.
Yeah, but wouldn't you want to know all that stuff before you start dealing with this person?
When we do an application, do we need to, what do we need to know when it does that? That's all in there, right?
When you file an application with a land use board, or with a municipality to develop property, you have to either be the owner of the property, or you have to be authorized by the owner of the property to proceed with a development application.
Mm-hmm.
You have to show that.
Okay, and do they have to give their certification that they're an urban renewal entity? Because to get the thirty-year abatement, they have to fill out a disclosure form and file it with the state.
Mayor, if I may briefly, just for the small portion, the urban renewal entity, that's a requirement of the redevelopment law, that they have to change their entity name, it has to say urban renewal.
Correct.
And that's why that occurs.
Or they can't get the thirty-year abatement.
That's just a matter of, that's a technical matter of law, if I understand.
Well, sometimes those technical matters of law, twenty years down the road, may help itself.
Obviously, in the future, we will make sure that we do that.
Yeah. Also, a lot of the other...
It was done.
It was done, okay. It was done on that.
He has it?
Yes.
Okay. Well, so, a lot of the other towns, they asked, with the pilot agreement, proof of adequate insurance required annually, and, and that seemed like a good idea, because I was reading about shore towns during Sandy, a lot of these people had pilot agreements, but once the development was built in ten years or fifteen years past, the developer decided he was going to save money and reduce his insurance. Then when Sandy hit, and some other things, he didn't have adequate insurance to rebuild, so then they didn't get the pilot payment.
Well, I believe, first off, if there's liens on the property, if there's financing involved in the property, the banks are going to make sure they have the proper insurance, and that, that the right amount of insurance is always kept there.
Well, that's the banks, but how would we know if he defaulted?
Yeah, you know, as far as that, so, I, I can, I mean, do we...
We're, we're generally named as the, as additional insured parties, so the, the insurance company, if there's a change in the terms of the policy, would have to notify us.
So we get an annual certificate of insurance when he renews it?
We generally don't, we would receive notice if they didn't renew it.
And, you know, like I said, I'm really nervous with these agreements, because I know we don't follow up on things, and I did a test. I'm testing the town. Now, back in ninety-three, we built the senior homes, and, and I'm not saying anything bad about the senior home, okay? We, we signed, we signed a pilot agreement with them in nineteen ninety-three. So the same time I put the one fifty Lincoln Boulevard Oprah request, I put an Oprah request for that pilot agreement. So I got the one fifty Lincoln Boulevard very promptly, and then I got an email that they needed extended time, because they couldn't find the pilot agreement. It was in the basement somewhere. Yeah, that's what you told me.
It's in the archives and about...
Well, we did, we did get it, and I think, did you get a copy of it?
I did finally, yes.
And did you see in there, too, that it was extended for forty years, to a forty-year number, an extra ten years? It was in that, it was in that agreement?
Well, yeah, that's another conversation.
Well, I mean, I just, I didn't look at it in detail, but I, I saw that, so...
Uh-uh, I'm not going to go there tonight, but, but anyway, so, to my point, so that's an active agreement.
Yes, it is.
It shouldn't be down in the archives in the basement.
Debbie, Debbie, that's a whole different topic for tonight. If you want to come in and talk to me about stuff like that, you can come in and talk to me about that, okay?
I will.
What, what else do you have as far as the three subjects that we're talking about tonight?
But just on the watch on tariffs, you know, Presbyterian Homes was running that, and now they're, they have Spring Point Senior Living, Inc., and its affiliates. Yeah, I was shocked, I saw a newspaper article that the Spring Point Senior Living was defrauding seniors. Now, we don't ask for their annual financials, or how they operate, or anything, we, we need to protect our seniors. You know, we don't gather that information like the pilot says they're supposed to, and so I think we need to ask them for their records.
Did we gather that information? We do get it.
Oh, no.
No, we don't. We don't get that.
No.
And obviously, we need to do that, yes.
It, well, they're, they're a few years behind. It says annually, they're supposed to produce the financials and how they're operating. So my concern is, you know, if they're in court now for defrauding seniors, we need to watch out for our seniors.
I agree.
Okay, I think I could talk to you out of...
Okay, Mr. Furman?
Yeah, John Furman, bring him to us. As, as far as the annual follow-up, the, the money comes to operate that building from HUD, and it also supplies a payment to cover the cost of the apartment for those people that cannot cover the whole nut.
Yeah, I'm not...
Now, how, now, I'm just giving you as background. Now, the question becomes, okay, who, who keeps their eye on this? That, that goes to your...
Right, that's my concern.
HUD, each year, the managing partner over there has to supply an, a audited statement on how that is run, and HUD also makes an annual physical inspection of that building to see that the quality is maintained, because the management company is at risk of losing its management contract if it doesn't comply with what HUD requires. So you have a pretty firm backup there.
Yeah, but they're also supposed to supply those financials to the borough.
Well, then, I can't speak to that.
That's what it says in the agreement.
But if they are, then they should.
Yes, Amy.
First of all, thank you for holding this meeting tonight, I think it's helpful, but I'd also like to say that if this is so completely positive for our town, I just, I just wonder why it wasn't put out, you know, information about this wasn't put out to residents in the past in the form of a newsletter, on the website, in the form of a pamphlet, to kind of get people ready for it, let them know what, what's kind of happening with the redevelopment plan, how it's changing, and why it's changing. And I think that, you know, having to come here tonight, request this after a great deal of time, you know, people coming to several meetings in the past two months, or past several months for some people, I think something like that would have made me feel, at least myself, a lot less like something was being done behind my back as a resident. I have moved here in November of two thousand and five, my husband and I are very proud members of the community. We chose to stay here, you know, wanting to have a different type of home, we waited and waited and waited seven years so that we could stay in Middlesex. So we are fully invested here. We, we intend to stay here and retire here, and we, as often as we can, go to business owners in town. We try to use them as much as possible to, to contribute to business owners in town. And there's nothing we'd like better than to see redevelopment, than to see this town prosper, and I think my problem with, it's not, I don't even know that I have a problem with a pilot program. I think the problem that I have is, and somebody, I don't know if you're here or not, but somebody posted this on social media, so thank you, it's a programmatic examination of municipal tax abatements, and it's an excellent document, it's twenty-seven pages long, it is a little long, but it does describe...
I did refer to that earlier.
Okay, I didn't...
I did refer to that earlier, yeah.
Terrific. And I think it's something that really needs to be used.
But also, so you understand, too, what that report, which was done by the New Jersey Office of the Controller, it was basically, what it came out of that is that the town, especially, and they use Jersey City as the poster child in, in that, in that report, is that communities like Jersey City took advantage of the pilot program, because they're an avid school district, and, and basically, what they're doing is because all the redevelopment that they're generating and giving pilot programs for, that's not going on the tax roll. So what happens is, based on the formula that the state's using to give aid to the avid school districts, and Jersey City is one of them, basically, Jersey City, that aid that they should be, should be going down based on the development that's going on in Jersey City, but because they're using pilot programs, it's not. So Jersey City, right now, is getting the best of both worlds. They're still getting the maximum aid that they need as an avid school district, and they're also getting all that revenue from the pilot program, and, and basically, what that report said, and it's more of an issue on a state level, not a municipality level, is that the state needs to change the formula that they use to, to come up with aid for school districts. The pilot program was not going to affect school districts like Middlesex Borough, but it does affect towns like Jersey City, who basically are, they are an avid school district, and they're still able to get the maximum aid, even though the value of their town, their community, has gone up immensely because of all the new development. So that's basically the gist of that report.
Well, it does say a lot more than that, and part of what it does say, too, is that it's just trying to teach people who are considering, towns who are considering these programs, to avoid the pitfalls, and they're outlined here, I'm not going to go through them, obviously, you've read it, I would encourage everyone here to read it. I think, though, you know, we, we do have one pilot program which exists already, we have another one on the table.
There is not one on the table at all yet.
Okay, so it's...
Okay, so there is not one yet.
Being considered.
It, it...
It's been brought before the planning board.
No, no, the planning board does not make that decision, the governing body does, okay?
So...
That does not happen until the plan is approved by... That does not happen until the plan is approved by the planning board.
Okay.
Okay? I just want to correct.
So plans have been submitted for consideration?
No, nothing has been put in for a pilot program at all yet. Okay? What they said at a meeting when they came before the governing body to find out if it confirmed, conformed with our development plan or not, was that their intent is to ask for one, but they have not, they have not made any applications yet.
Okay, so we know that that's the intent then?
But I just want to make sure you understand that.
Yeah, no, thank you for clarifying. And so I think that having the one pilot program already in existence, although it's not complete, it, I think it's very important that before considering another one, talking about another one, it's very important to take a look at what's already been done and to determine the success or lack thereof. I, prior to living at 351 Grant Avenue, I lived at 209 Walnut Street, which I was on the corner of Walnut and B Street. So straight up B Street, you know, now when I look out my son's bedroom window or my daughter's bedroom window, I see this four-story apartment building and lots of traffic down my street I never had before. Lots of people up and down my street that I haven't had before, lots of traffic issues that I hadn't had before. And I think that as we consider moving on and consider re, you know, or consider, you know, continuing to redevelop, we need to be very careful about the number of apartments we're going to allow for, for various reasons. We don't want to stress our schools. We don't want to stress our roads. I think we all know, I especially, having lived in that neighborhood, the only way out of my development, you can tell me A Street, B Street, C Street, the only way out of my development was Raritan Avenue, Lincoln Boulevard. And if I was truly desperate to get my children to school so that they weren't going to be late, I would kind of cut around by the river and go out, I guess it's George Street, and hope that I could make that left out onto Lincoln Boulevard. Throw in a rainstorm, a little fender bender on 287. It's, it's already a disaster on those days. It's already very crowded when we don't have any of that. I cannot imagine the sheer number of cars. And I know we can't talk about specific projects, but we all know, we all know what we're going to deal with. I cannot imagine that type of traffic on Lincoln Boulevard. And there is no other way out until you get down to, I think the first one is Decatur, Clinton, I'm sorry, and then further down, that intersection from Possum Town going on to, I guess Cedar to Harris, is, is a complete disaster.
Okay.
Then we have a train stop.
And I'm understanding what you're saying. And, and you're right, every development that comes before the borough, every, every proposal for, for a pilot program that comes before the borough needs to be dealt with on an individual basis, needs to be looked at, needs to make sure that whatever we do agree to is right for Middlesex. And, and I agree with you on that, okay? But we can't continue to, to, to look for the perfect project either, okay?
Well, it doesn't have to be perfect, it just has to be right for Middlesex.
And that's fine.
And it has to be.
But we all need also to have an open mind too when we're looking at it, okay? And as long as we do that, and as long as we have the conversations that we're having tonight, I think that we'll be able to do that, okay? And, and you're right, every development, every proposal has to be dealt with individually and how it affects the borough at that time, we have to do that. And, and that goes with pilot programs. Not every development that comes before us is going to make sense for a pilot program. It's not. And not every development that comes before is going to make sense for Middlesex Borough. And that's why we have planning board hearings, that's why we do that, okay? So again, I agree with you on that. We, we cannot, you know, you know, we, we learned on the first project. We learned the mistakes that were made, and it's somebody's fault. It, it was the first big project that we had in the borough for a long, long time. We're learning from that. And, and we, and if we don't correct those problems that we learned from that, then shame on us. And you're right, we need to do that, as far as that. We need to make sure it makes sense.
I wanted to also mention that as that project was being approached before they had even broken ground, I did talk to the realtor who sold me my house on Walnut Street. And he told me before that was built, I said, how is this going to affect the value of my property? How is this going to affect when I go to sell this house? He said, how many stories, Amy? I said, well, it was supposed to be three. And he said, any more than three, you're going to be poorly affected, you're going to be adversely affected. And so now there's four.
And you know what? Now I'll respectfully disagree with him, okay, so.
I, I'm going to disagree with you. I would be willing to provide you with proof too.
All right, we got, we got time for one or two more questions, so. Somebody would like to come up, other, Debbie, I know you've had the mic close to the mic.
I just have one more thing, but we'll let Rich come in.
Rich Thomasy. Ron, what's our obligation with regard to affordable housing units in Middlesex?
Right now, it's still in the courts. We don't know yet. We don't have that answer yet. What I can tell you is that once that decision is made, we will oblige by whatever we have to do legally, okay?
Okay.
You know, at this moment, we really don't know what that obligation is yet.
Looking at the numbers that are up there, the, what's the total assessment of 150 after the reevaluation?
It'll be, no, that, that $500,000 is, is current value, so that's going to be based on current value. So that's about right. That's about right what it'll be. As per my assessor, that's about right what it would be.
So that's going to be the same now?
Yeah, because it's based on current value. You gotta remember, the original $24,000 is not based on current value, it's based on value based on 1986.
But you have two figures up there for the pilot.
Right, because.
Before and after.
Right, because on the pilot, again, let me explain it to you again. On the pilot program, because the pilot money goes on top of the, the land tax, okay? The, before the revale is adding the $24,000 to that. After the revale, it's estimated that that $24,000, that value will go up approximately 150 percent. So, and the reason why that goes up, Rich, is because that value at 24,000, that, that assessment of $24,000 now is based on 1986 assessment, not based on today's assessment. The assessment that you have for, for the project when it's completed is based on today. That's why it won't go up.
Okay, so the total assessment figure is before and after the revale.
It's current, it really is current. That's what it is. So that would be after the revale. That's going to be the value, whether, you know, with the revale or without, that's going to be the value of it.
I just find it hard to believe that the total assessment, that a pilot agreement will bring more revenue into the town than a regular tax assessment.
Actually, that often happens with, with pilot programs. If you look at Jersey City, some of them are, are a lot more. And, and it's because that, that land is put on top of that. I mean, it's put on top of that land, okay? When we spoke, when I spoke, I think it was in January, about what the revenue was, I was just talking about the pilot program. I'd be quite honest with you, I wasn't aware that it went on top of the land also, so.
Yeah, because the figures in the fall are different than these figures.
No, and, and I just thought about just that 12 and a half percent. But I was not aware at that time that, that the assessment of the land stays intact and he still, they still pay that. So I was not aware of that at that time.
I have to agree with Amy a little bit that, I, I just wonder why the, the, the new project and even the sewer assessment, sewer tax people got, came as such a surprise to the residents.
You know what, I didn't address that with Amy. You know what, when, when I took office in, in January of last year, one of the things that I saw when I sat on the council previous to that, the borough has always done a terrible job of reaching out to its residents. And, and we started to put into motion things, we changed, we've changed our website, we're, we're still working on that website and still have some wrinkles to it. We're also bringing in a firm to, a PR firm to help us communicate with, with the residents, but also to promote our community within, and also to promote our community outside. Because you know what, our community has a lot to offer. And, and we don't reach out to our own residents, let alone anybody else. So, yes, we need to do a better job, and to make it short, we need to do a better job to get to our residents and get the message out and communicate with them. I think you'll start to see changes through this year, that that'll be better, as far as that.
Oh, we'll see.
Okay. I'll have time for one more question. One more, Deb.
One more.
It's got to be about these.
It's going to be real quick.
Okay.
Okay, about the committee, you said you were going to form.
Yes.
I think, what'd you say, how many citizens?
Um, I, I expanded it, I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I, it's, it's more than what I originally talked about.
Citizens business, this develop, what do you call it, director? And then you mentioned the planning and zoning board.
Right, right, the, the original members were, were the planning board chairperson, the zoning board chairperson, the mayor, two council members, and then a resident and a business owner. We're going to be expanding that, so.
Okay, because isn't the planning and zoning, they're supposed to stay separate from the borough? And when they get a plan in front of them, they're supposed to basically?
This is an advisory committee. They're not making any decisions. It's just that, you know, you get their input, that's all. They're an advisory committee.
Why couldn't we fit that committee into this economic development committee that's in the code book?
We're actually doing, we're actually reversing that. I have an economic development committee, we're putting them together.
Because this seems like it'd be more transparent because you'd have meeting minutes and all that.
Right, and, and I can still have meeting minutes, but we're going to combine those two committees is what we're doing.
Okay. I'll leave you alone.
Thank you. Okay, everyone, I want to thank everyone. Yes, Mr. Furman?
A minute ago, you were talking about, and the lady was talking about communication and as a member of the economic development. Recently, we've been able to acquire a patch site for Middlesex Borough. And it's pretty rudimentary right now, but as it develops, with the community's participation and also the patch pulling out and getting advertising from the local people, we'll have another opportunity, will.
Okay, I know, you sent me an email on that. If you have any more information, come and see me.
Okay, I'll give you the patch address.
Okay, go ahead. Somebody write that down, Kathy, you write that down, okay? Okay, yeah, that's right, I, I think you gave it to me too, I think you also did. Did you give it to me?
I have to.
Okay.
It's okay, we have it too.
All right, patch, this is going to look great on the video. P A, all this is in lowercase, and it's P A T C H dot C O N slash new E D W dash Jersey slash Middlesex. So try that out. It's a step, I think, in the right direction for the year.
Thank you very much.